Now call the order, the Gold Bar Council meeting, January seventh, 2014. Please stand and comply with the...
Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ of all.
All council members are present? Let the record show that all council members are present. Get this together. Okay. I need to call for motion to accept a change to the amended agenda. I'm going to take over and do a couple of office so we can be efficient. And Linda, if you would stand. I have been to low and do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of City of Gold Bar Mayor for a four-year term according to law to the best of my ability. I do. If you could sign right now, that's in your line. The mayor with her certificate. And Davey, you could stand. Yes. If you could stand up, that's right.
I, Davey Florence Martin, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of City of Gold Bar, Council position three, for a four-year term according to law to the best of my ability.
I will.
Thank you.
If you could sign, and I'm assuming you're on line. And Davey with your certificate.
Thank you Florence.
The agenda has been amended since we put out the packets, so can I please get a motion to approve the agenda as it's been amended?
I'm not the motion to approve the intended amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
Point of order.
Yes.
It's been brought to my attention that Councilmember Hodo hasn't been sworn in for this year.
Yes, he has. It was short and long.
Yes.
He was sworn in ever since.
Last meeting, yeah.
Short and long.
Short and long, yes. Was it December third?
Okay. My first report is that I'm happy to be your mayor now, my first day, so be fair with me if I make any errors. I will get better at this. And that's it for now. Um, can we have staff at work? Chief Casey?
We didn't have a lot happen in December town, so, um, but that was outside of town, but not much in town. Just a little bit about what's going on now, though. Right now, we're, the sheriff's office conducts a shift bin every year in December, and so deputies move around in the rest of the department. Deputies here are not subject to that bin unless they choose to leave. But with all of that, certain specialty positions come open and deputies choose to apply for and move into those. And so Deputy Greiner, who's currently on night shift on the second half of the week, is coming to day shift first half to Ian Whipple's spot. Ian Whipple is going to move temporarily to the second half of the week, still on day shift, and then he, he's actually bid out of Gold Bar. He'll be leaving Gold Bar, but he agreed to stay because Jake Cook had to go to the firing range to fill in for our range master for about two to three months while he's on leave. And then Doug Saint-Denis is a new employee to the sheriff's office. He's been a law enforcement officer just about as long as I have, and he worked for the city of Lindwood before here, and before that he worked in Nevada. He's got a great reputation, and he's coming to us on night shift as a, as a new, a new Gold Bar region deputy. So that's the changes I have right now, and I actually expect more before the first of February. Rick Greiner, who is coming to day shift, earlier this year, he responded to a call outside of town where he was called upon to make a split decision, or a split second decision, I'm sorry, on whether to try to physically intervene and save somebody's life in a way that was going to put his own life in danger. And he did that, and for that, he is going to receive a medal at the annual awards ceremony on January fifteenth. It's a life-saving medal. There's only just a few, few guys each year, you know, do something that merits that kind of recognition, and Rick Greiner is one of those. Just want, I know he's not here, but I wanted to congratulate him in the presence of the folks from town here for, for what he did and for the recognition he's given.
Lisa?
Nothing to report that's not on the agenda.
Do you have anything on council, Lee?
Yeah, I have one. We got a letter and I'd like to respond to at least my portions, all email sent by Bob Strong to current or past elected councilmembers, from bobstrong@usermail.com. It was done as a public records request, and it says, and Susan said if, and this is a letter from Susan Forbes, thank you Susan. And if Councilman Strong will publicly promise not to communicate regarding the staff, council business, et cetera, using his private email handresses, then I will withdraw the public records request absolutely. It was a mistake on my part to do that to begin with. So I understand how it happened. I don't feel it's a good and a bad thing sometimes. So thank you, Susan. I appreciate that, and bring it to my attention in particular. So I so promise. That's all. Boy, and Happy New Year.
That's right. Happy New Year. Tom?
I actually went to a meeting this morning. There was another Boom City meeting, and I always come away from those inspired and frustrated and all of the above. What we talked about today that really kind of hit home with me is Sultan has a sign, they've received a grant to put up a sign, I think on both ends of Sultan. Have you heard about it?
I believe so.
I think there's going to be two signs.
Yeah.
And it's going to have Sultan at the top, and then a spot just below that where they can put a banner that advertises things, in our case, like Gold Dust Days, tree lighting, any kind of activities that the city is having. And then underneath that, in a half space, are places for about six businesses to have a banner, a vinyl banner advertising their business, and they will charge a little bit, like a hundred dollars, to put the advertisement for the business. And I was talking with Ken Walker, who's administrating the city of Sultan, who lives here in Gold Bar, and he said that as far as he's concerned, when they get the sign up and, and set, that they'll just take that grant, plug in Gold Bar's name, and see if we can't get a grant to do the same thing for Gold Bar.
That'd be great.
Which I think is just, yeah, because signage is crucial. Yeah. So we really, and that's part of my frustration, is that we need to let people know what we have here, and there's a whole push with the visitor's center to promote the Sky Valley as a recreation destination, and we're part of that. And, and we just need to let people know that we're part of that. So exciting stuff coming. Thank you. Ken?
Yes. I would like to, I've, I've observed that PUD has been changing lights, street lamps, and I know that back in November, December, that I complained because the two lights next to my corner were out, and they've replaced those, and I'm appreciative of that. And they are working their way through the city, as I understand, and the lights that they're replacing with don't illuminate quite as well as the lights that they are replacing, but they're brighter, but they just don't have the spread. But, but anyway, I, I actually am pleased that they're doing that.
Some of them have shields, so you might have shields on there. Depends on if somebody that's already there, they're automatically not going to turn on them.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case in...
But they're LEDs, I'm pretty sure.
They're LEDs, yeah, so they, they, they're very much brighter. They are brighter, but they don't illuminate the area quite as well as they are. We hit the street, but it used to, it used to get a big spread, and it's not a big spread at the moment, but that's okay. We're lit up, whereas before we weren't, so we're happy.
Okay, we have some old business that's, oh, that's right. We have sort of some comments, if anyone would like to stand up. We have Salt School District here. Yes, please.
Dan Chaplik, C-H-A-P-L-I-K. Counsel, Mayor, citizens. My name's Dan Chaplik. I'm a citizen of the Sky Valley. I actually live in Sultan. I'm also the superintendent of the Sultan School District. I think you're aware, but if not, the Sultan School District serves kids from Gold Bar startup and through Sultan. One of the things that has been critical to our well-being is a levy, and we have run in the last couple of cycles, every four years, our last being in 2010. What I passed out to you is a levy fact sheet that you will be sent in mail here in about a week, but trying to get out in front of as many people as we can to make you aware that, that the Sultan School District is running a replacement, whether it's a tax that we're currently paying, it's not new, it's not increased. The local levies in school districts make up about twenty percent of the funding, so it's critical. It allows our band program to prosper, it allows us to buy textbooks, it allows us to have athletic teams, and pays for a lot of things that the funding that we generate through student enrollment don't. So it's a, it's a critical piece of that. There's a number of questions that, that are outlined in here, if you have any. The amount per year are down in the lower right corner. Those are similar to what we're collecting this year. By law, school districts ask for a fixed amount of money, it can only reach a certain limit, and that's essentially what we're doing this year, that is the same as the 2010 to 2014 levy. But it's a, it's a big piece of what we do, and so certainly want to make everybody aware of that. Do I have three minutes?
Just continue if you...
Okay, okay. Some of the things that we've done this year, for example, has funded part of our all-day kindergarten. I don't know if you're aware of the many accolades that our school, our high school band program receives, but they, they do a lot of the things they do partially because of the funding of the levy. It allows us to send to all kinds of different places, and they're a small two-way school that competes with three A and four A schools and holds their own quite well. For example, our high school has about five hundred and fifty students, and it's not uncommon for them to get in competitions with high schools that have two thousand and win. They, they are that good. Smaller class size allows us to keep technology in the schools, purchase curriculum, updated math curriculum, science curriculum, social studies curriculum, Avid, which is a program we implemented in middle school, advanced placement via, via design, via individual determination, really proven to be a great thing for, for students. Safety and security, counseling, general maintenance. And so there's a lot of varied needs that the maintenance and operations levy funds, and that's exactly what it is, maintenance and operations. So is it okay to take questions, or?
If you want.
Anybody have any questions?
First I've heard of you, actually. Where's the ballot?
The ballots will be mailed out on January twenty-fourth, so it's upcoming, and need to be postmarked a little later, I think eight p.m. on February eleventh. So it's, it's still in front of us, but I'm simply trying to get out and make everybody aware.
So it's interesting that your levy rates in the lower right corner go up and down, then up and down.
What a lot of school districts do is they put an average, and so they'll take them for the four years and put an average. The way that is calculated is off of what our levy base is. So we have a student enrollment figure that we try to project, and it's based on what history has told us, on how many kindergarten kids we think we have coming in, and so we just tell exactly what we think it will be. But you'll see some school districts, if you look at their ballots, it might say four thirty-five all four years. That's really an average. It's never exactly same, the same amount. And so that's why it's listed the way that it is.
And so it's based, the estimate is based on school population?
School population is a big part of it. It's called your levy base. It's state funding, which is really driven by student enrollment, and federal funding, which is driven by Title I and a few other programs. That all makes up a money amount, which is about twenty billion dollars, and then you come up with this amount that's a percentage of that levy base. And that's how you come up with it. But it does vary a little bit, so if we gained a hundred students, for example, then we'd probably collect a little bit more money because the levy bases is larger, but individuals would probably go down a little bit because there's more people paying to that amount. If we lost a couple hundred students, we'd still collect the same amount, but if the levy base would go down, then we'd probably have to roll some of that money back, just because we wouldn't have the funding that we projected to be in the levy base. Hopefully that makes sense. They don't make it easy on helping us understand or for us to be able to communicate it in a way that everybody else understands. It's complicated, to say the least.
Now, is this what supports our, the athletic teams and the transportation?
Yes, yes. And again, it is a replacement. It's not brand new, and it's not an increase. We're just asking was to renew what we're already going to do. It's about twenty percent of that budget.
And this will be for four years?
Four years, yeah. Two fourteen, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen.
That's a huge portion of your budget, huh?
It's too much, it really is. And if you watch some of the news and some of the things that have been happening at the state level, there's recognition of that, and they're trying to get it fixed. And in the meantime, you know, it would be really a huge hardship not to have it until they do get it fixed. And if you looked at our total tax burden, I don't have it listed on here, all of the school districts in Snohomish County, I think there's nineteen of them, we're about the sixteenth highest, so we're way at the bottom as far as total tax burden. We don't run a technology levy, we don't run a transportation levy. There's a, you can run all kinds of them. We, you know, I feel really good about the staff working very hard within the means that we have to serve our students in the best way possible so that you're not constantly coming out asking for money. There certainly are needs, I'm not going to deny that, but we try to live within the means that we have to do the best job possible. Thank you very much.
We have a couple things, a couple old business to go over again, and now the Snohomish Health District Board Representative, if anybody has died better and wants to roll here.
So this is for elected officials, they want a elected official to represent Snohomish Health District Board, we talked about it some last month. You would have to attend the meetings that are in Everett, I believe they're all close a month. And the alternative is, is if you don't want to do it, you may choose to continue having the mayor of Snohomish represent the city that she represents in Dex Monroe, Snohomish, and Sultan and Gold Bar currently. So your choice tonight would be either one of you choose to do it, or appoint Mayor Kuzak to continue in her position, or if there's somebody else you'd rather appoint that's an elected official, you could do that as well.
I could probably do that, recognizing that because of Snohomish Health issues, that there may be some times that there will be problems.
In those times, you could call me, and I might be able to go in for you.
But we have an alternate vote?
I'm actually not sure. That would definitely be a question for the Health District.
We also list that on here. We also have a vote that we can actually have. That she already goes there, and she'll probably continue going there. It says she's going to continue. She has the minutes forwarded to you so that you can just report to the council. Or with Bob, do you want to physically?
No, 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 I'm backing you up here.
So forward the minutes, or do you want to actually attend the meeting?
At least the beginning of my term, can't refuse.
And then you would want to make a motion appointing Councilmember Martin as representative for the City of Gold Bar, if that's what the council chooses to do.
Okay, I'll make that.
I'd like to make a motion. Do you have a? Kent would make the motion.
I'll get this out.
You will. So that was a motion to appoint Councilmember Davey as a representative, and you'll ask for a second.
One second.
And ask for discussion.
Do we have a discussion, or is there, do you guys have any discussion about it? Now the call table. Okay, can we have a vote? All a favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Opposed. And motion carried? Motion carried. So you will let me know when and where.
The process is that I will do a letter to the Health District saying that City of Gold Bar has elected to appoint you, and request that they send all information about the meetings to you to give so you know what's going on, and then you can also call them, and I'll get the information to you too.
Community Transit Board Representative, we have a council member on the boardship to this one.
So this is to get old business, I would like to nominate him. With his permission.
I'll second that nomination.
I've done it before. I did it two years ago, and if the routine is the same, we show up for a meeting in, in January at least, and then they vote for representative of the collective body, we elect the board members, and, and the rest are released, board members.
And that meeting is January sixteenth?
January sixteenth.
So I have the information here. So that was a nomination, why don't we put that in form of a motion?
I move that we appoint Kent Ware as our Community Transit Board Representative.
Can we call the discussion? Are any discussions allowed? Do we have a vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, we move on to your business. And we have an ILA. Is the interlocal agreement for an overlay improvement within the City of Gold Bar?
Okay, before you enter your packets, you'll see there's a ten-year agreement, it's an interlocal agreement with the City of Gold Bar, with Cady Snohomish, to do any other overlay projects, such as we have coming up next year. And also included in this, not only does it contain overlay projects, if we find the rainbow and pot of gold, and we come up with street funds to do any street improvements, as long as there's no federal funding involved in that, the county, if we so choose, they can do some engineering for us at their cost, will do the project, or at their cost, or they'll have a consultant do it, or a subcontractor them do it, at cost, plus fifteen percent overhead for any duties in the office and stuff like that. And we figure ten years, that would be good, because generally you get funding for overlay projects every three years, every four years. So it's a good thing to have. And basically, a lot of communities have this interlocal agreement, and when a county comes through their section of town or city, doing their project, county projects, they just jump over to the city projects also. So it's a lot cheaper, it doesn't take competitive bidding. Basically, I'm asking for the council to give the mayor the approval to enter into this contract so we can give one, basically.
This is an agreement that we've previously held, or is a new agreement?
Yeah. You know, I'm not sure, but I think we have it. They, they've done workforce in the past on all overlay projects. You know, it's expanded because now it includes any projects we have that do not do any federal funding. When we go out for any project with federal funding, you have to come out for dibs.
Just to be a little bit geeky here on the very last page, thinking about, on the same page, Bob and I both noticed that Aaron Ruppin is not back anymore.
Just your being geeky, I can address that. Um, interlocal's a boilerplate, and so when you make your motion to approve, you can certainly state in the motion that you're approving the interlocal as presented with the change to the signature on the last page. You can sign it. What happens is you sign the interlocal, it gets sent back to the county for their signature, and then when both signatures are on the interlocal, they return a final copy to you, and in the final copy, they'll have big data correction. If you wanted, you could phrase that in your motion to make sure that it's listed. More than likely, it's just an oversight on their boilerplate.
So we need to move through to approve, then all of the agreement, and for overlay improvements with the county.
So we need to move to approve, then all of the agreement, and for overlay improvements with the county. Assuming you're correct, it came for our county executive.
Can I have a second?
One second, that's all.
Discussions on this?
Yes. This is a contract that the city has been in before, it's just that it's a contract for so many years, so it's been ten years since it came before you.
Oh, yeah.
Like there is a, on a, on files.
And John is in favor of this, I'm most definitely, most definitely.
It's all approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carried. On this next one, we're going to change that, the way that the council has presented these things. Before, we did an introduction, and then we did a first reading the next time. And then we had the second reading and the approval all in one meeting. Now we're ready to have the introduction and the first reading and the first intro. And then the second reading and the approval will be at the final meeting. This gives the public more time to read it, it's out there for a longer span of time. So it can be done better.
So this is, the second order of business on the agenda, which is the ordinance adoption process. That's just a statement you're giving to us, it's not a, you're not answering.
Unless you have.
No, no, I'm.
Just a policy detail.
We don't need, we don't need approval for that, do we?
It's just a change of how we do things. It's administrative, it doesn't require.
So our first introduction, our first reading is on order six fifty-one, Title IX.
Have you talked about that one?
This is just taking out the curfew because it's unconstitutional to have a curfew on anyone, either a lawyer. So we're going to kick it out of our ordinance, out of our municipal vote.
So what are we, what are we trying to approve today, first reading?
Yes.
So we need a motion to approve the first reading?
Motion to approve.
Oh, then I move that we approve the first reading for ordinance, pending, pending, public case, laws, and welfare, number six fifty-one.
Can I have a second? Second. Okay, any discussion on this?
So, just curiosity, you said it's not constitutional. So it's not explicitly, so I don't know whether you're referring to the state constitution or to the US constitution.
It's just going to change constitution, I'm not really.
So it's not constitutional for the state constitution, what you're telling me? China, yeah.
The United States Supreme Court has been striking curfew ordinances across the country. Just, there has not yet been one that stands up for it to generalize curfew like this. Cities can impose curfews for an emergency situation, like to prevent looting and rioting and things like that, such as, like, you know, Seattle has the big riots there, or, you know, under certain flooding conditions, earthquake conditions, something like that. So, however, these curfews that we have, like Gold Bar, that says that, you know, people under the age of eighteen can't be out on the streets after ten PM night, or something similar to that, those are unconstitutional for the United States Supreme Court and the Washington State Supreme Court. They, they made the determination back in the nineteen seventies, that they issued a ruling that our constitution provides greater protection for the civil rights of our citizens than does the United States Constitution. So they would, you know, they're going to at least do what the federal government does and probably take it even further. But right now, most of the ones that I've seen have been. Most of it has stricken by the US Supreme Court across the country, I don't know how the Washington State's had this strike.
No, that's okay. So, yeah, I was, I was curious as to, to which consti, I know it's not explicitly expressed in the US constitution that you have the right to make this, have the right to do ordinance, curfew ordinances. So I would not think that, that it would be constitutional at the US level because, but, but I didn't know that it wasn't.
Right, so the constitutional amendments that they use to say that it was unconstitutional. So any further discussion?
You have, um, the motion has been, let's see, Davy? Oh, yeah, Bob made the motion, Davy second, so we have the discussions being called.
Is it approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I have number four, is the ordinance, six fifty-two. And this is rather simple, it's mainly changing from clerk treasure to.
This one actually is the, um, change in how business licenses are regulated. So there's more to it than the changes for treasure. We've been, do, sorry, I. Some time ago, the city changed from, um, a person applies for a business license to the city. They come into the city hall and they get an application, and Denise would then go through the approval process. Some time ago, it's changed to the Department of Revenue now handles all of that. So you can apply for a business online, and then it goes to the state, and then the state sends a contact to Denise, Denise after approved or disapproved, and then the person is issued a license. Well, in going through all the ordinances, it became clear that Denise doesn't have any sort of written criteria to help her base her opinion and her final decision. So there's never been a license that hasn't been approved, but if one wasn't, she would have to have criteria to say, we're not approving this license based on this, this, and this, and use a municipal code or law within the city. So what this ordinance is doing is taking the current business ordinance title and amending it to give her the criteria she needs for the new process with the Department of Revenue. So it's updating the business license regulations to bring them in compliance with the way that it's now done with the state. So that's where you'll see the changes. And then like Linda said, also changing the phrasing for clerk treasure, since we don't have a clerk treasure, separating that out for city staff. That's what's going on with that one.
So motion?
And this is first reading?
First reading and introduction, if you have anything to add.
I'll make a multiple first reading of ordinance number six fifty-two. One second.
Any further discussion on it?
So what specifically is, so, so you're giving criteria to Denise? What specifically are we changing?
When you read through it, you'll see, um, a lot of the changes, um, so if I can find a example for you. On, um, let's see, for instance, on page four, it still says that, um, "An application for a license is required by this chapter may be obtained in the Gold Bar City Hall." Well, they're not anymore, they're obtained through the state. So that has to be stricken and changed. The expiration, let's see. Talks about inspections, I'd have to go through it, but if you read through, you'll see the changes that are specific for.
Yeah, I actually have them, so I'll, I'll.
I can't find the, and things like this, it's quickly taking up too much of the, kind of the time.
Deal with the payment there, just laying out, so it's, you know, could change. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I think you'll find, you're looking for Ken on page thirteen, towards the very ending of it.
Okay, we need to change the signature card with the Bank of America, so that I can actually buy you that and make a. So I need, um.
You need a motion, I need a motion. That's a move. We change the signature cards so that you can pay the bills.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have a last piece of asking if any council member wishes to volunteer beyond the finance committee, so that they have the control, one council member, two council members.
So, let me understand, I mean, I'm not, I'm not in any way objecting, but I, I want to understand. We're still limiting the, the finance committee to two individuals, two of which are now council members. That's a question.
It should be two and two, two citizens and two council. Because we, we have the two and two already, although we went down to four council members, now we're at five council members, so.
All right.
Bring it back, I'm sorry.
We've always had four on, on our committee. We had at large, we've had at large, but when we first started this, they were two of us council members, excuse me, and two at large. And then it just worked out sometimes, two council member would be gone, and then I, I just always stayed on. But we should really have two council members, I've always asked for that, and then have two at large. Because if, for example, if Kim is out of the country, and it's just the two of us, who's going to, who's going to bring it forth to the council?
I mean, that's why it should be.
Thank you.
So do we have two at large now?
We do, yes.
With one in reserve.
Yes.
So what we're doing is we're bringing it back up to the floor, which we've had in the past. You have a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we add another council meeting to the finance. One second, the motion.
Any further discussions on this?
Actually, let me amend my motion, because I did see that Bob Strong volunteered. I'll make a motion that we add Bob Strong. One second, the evidence.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yep, motion carried.
Is this appropriate time for discussion about the finance committee? Because during the audit, there was some mention of us actually, um, its checkbook balance.
And statements, the bank statements.
The view of the statements, the bank statements, the checking statements. And I don't know that any decision's been made that was sure or shouldn't, or who's going to actually assume that responsibility.
On that part, I'm going to be going down to the auditors and actually talking with them to clarify what they're saying, as to what you're doing, and what you're not doing. So therefore, we'll standardize, go forward out to that. But I first want to talk to them, make sure that we do it right. All in favor?
No, we didn't. So now you're going to another. So now we're down to minutes.
I did have one question about the minutes. It says, computers for officials, the time content, we have the David and Mike Myers to give us.
Uh, we're working on that, that's where we get credit cards. It's either, we need to get the credit cards, so that we can get it online, or being able to, like, go and get it. So Staples does not have this good price on it, I prefer to get the credit cards to go online and get the better price. Denise is also checking in with Mike Myers to see if he can't get us a deal through his contest. So we're looking at several options of tracking that, I'm hoping to have at the next meeting. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, may I move?
I move that we accept the minutes for December seventeen.
Second?
One second.
And discussions on this too? Discussions on this? All this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I have a call for any discussion, all opposed? All of you? Yeah, okay, sorry, I missed that one. Perfect. Sorry about that. I'm doing minutes and doing, listening at the same time in this meeting.
She's bringing the truck, do it all.
Okay. Yeah, we had, um, vouchers from two zero seven five zero to two zero seven eight seven.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept for approval and payment checks two zero seven five zero through two zero seven eight seven for a grand total of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, of which fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents are claims, and twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents are payroll.
Three seventy-five.
And what is it?
Three fifty-seven.
Okay. Twenty thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any citizen comments at this time? You can state your name.
Thank you. Frank Lynch, forty-one, two oh two, Men Creek Drive, not in the city, but certainly in the UGA. I would like to comment on two items. I would like to comment on two items. And the first one is completely unsolicited. I just, I didn't know Mr. Chaplin was going to be here tonight, in fact. I served for five years as a planning commissioner to the city of Salton. We did a lot of work. We did a comprehensive plan. We looked into levies and impact fees. And the one thing that we discovered that surprised me is the Salton School District had several opportunities where they could have imposed some type of a fee, some type of a levy. They could have gotten money from the citizens, and they chose not to, because it wasn't something they really needed. Would have been nice to have. They could have justified it, and they didn't do it. Based on that, and my experiences with Mr. Chaplin professionally, I can tell you, well, I want to say too, the school board, school district's board is an excellent, excellent body. They're doing great work. I just can't say enough good things about them. What I can say, if the school district ever pops up and they say, we need a levy, we need money, absolutely, I would say, please do support that. Please do. They don't ask for money unless they really see a need for it. They're farsighted. They know that they have big things coming down the road. They're planning ahead, and they're working well in that direction. I might call Mr. Chaplin for that. The other thing is, possibly one of the most underrated representative positions there is that we will ever deal with, is the Snohomish Health District Board. We had this come up a couple of times. They were looking for representatives, and they had asked me personally, and I didn't. You know, that was something that was just, like, busy work, and I, I was very, very lucky, as you will find out. It's, actually, it's a pretty important position. I'd say, I don't know if it rates up with the P S R C as importance, but being a representative of that is a fine, fine thing to do.
What was your name?
Franklin O I N T H.
Thank you.
On February first, Sheriff Trenary and our precinct commander, Moe Deaton, will be in Salton at ten A M. until noon, where they're inviting the, any member of the public that wishes to come down and meet the sheriff, ask him any questions, or the precinct commander, or anyone, to join them for coffee at Bonaccio's. You'll have to buy your own coffee, but. But there's no, no cost for attendance, but if you want to buy some coffee, you'll have to buy your own.
What would be the hours?
And it will be from ten A M. until noon on Saturday, February first, and I'll bring it up as a reminder at the next council meeting as well. We'll have flyers out on the counter tables, so.
Thank you, Steve, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm gonna go. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion.
Second that motion.
That too! In favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Congratulations, this is a good meeting.